One person or at the City Hall Council Chambers located at 125 East Main Street, Grass Valley, California. Regular meetings are scheduled at 7:00 PM on the third Tuesday of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 17 by Nevada County Media, on the internet at cityofgrassvalley.com, or on the City of Grass Valley's YouTube channel. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at 530-274-4390, and email to public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting if received by 5:00 PM. Comments received after that will be addressed during the item and/or at the end of the meeting. Commission will have the option to modify their actions on items based on comments received. Action may be taken on any agenda item. Agenda materials, staff reports, and background information related to regular agenda items are available on the city's website. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the commission after distribution of the packet will be made available on the city's website, cityofgrassvalley.com. So, that was the notification. Can we, someone like me to pledge allegiance?
There's a guest to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Arbuthnot.
Here.
Commissioner Blanty.
Here.
Commissioner Kutz.
Here.
And Vice Chairman Robbins.
Here.
All four members are present.
Agenda approval. It's a pretty hopefully easy one today. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda submitted.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Arbuthnot.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Kutz.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robbins.
Yes.
All four yeses.
The agenda is approved, which takes us to the action minutes for, this is February. Didn't we need in March?
No, we did not.
We did not?
No.
We're by April. Did we meet neither?
Did not meet neither of those months.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's so unusual.
So, yes, do we have any comments about the minutes, or shall we move to approve those as well?
I move that we approve the minutes submitted.
I'll second.
And with that, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Arbuthnot.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Kutz.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robbins.
Yes.
Four yeses.
Which takes us to open public comments. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at 530-274-4390, and email to public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting if received by 5:00 PM. Comments received after will be addressed during the item or at the end. Commissioners will have the option to modify their actions based on the comments received. There's a time limitation of five minutes per person for all emailed, voicemail, and in-person comments, and only one type of public comment per person. For any items not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction or interest of the city, please come to the podium at this time. If you wish to speak regarding a scheduled agenda item, please come to the podium when the item is announced. When recognized, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Are there any members of the public who would like to provide comment? Seeing none, we can close public comment period in three.
Vice Chairman, we first want to go to the electronic.
Oh, sorry.
No, and there is no public comments. Also, we did skip over the election of the chair and vice chair after roll call, so we should go back to that.
I thought that was down here. You are correct. I apologize. Right, so we need to elect officers, given the regrettable resignation of Kimberly. She will be missed. So we need a new chair. Is there anyone who wishes to nominate someone for chair?
I would like to nominate Eric Robbins to be our new chair.
I'll second that.
With the motion and the second, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Arbuthnot.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Kutz.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robbins.
Yes.
Four yeses.
Thank you, everyone, for your vote of confidence. But now, that means we now need a vice chair. So, do we have anyone?
I would like to nominate James Arbuthnot to be the vice chair.
And I will second that. Can we have the roll call on the vote for vice chair?
Commissioner Arbuthnot.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Kutz.
Yes.
Chairman Robbins.
Yes.
Four yeses.
Congratulations to. And with that slight detour on the agenda, you said there was no electronic public comment?
Correct.
Okay. Then public comment period is, was, I suppose, was already closed, which takes us to the public hearing item, Development Review and Use Permit 22 PLN-02. Back report, please. Go ahead when ready.
Good evening, Plant Commissioners, Lance Low, Community Development Department. Before tonight, item number three of the agenda is Developer Review Committee Recommendation of the Developer Review and Use Permit for Approximately 3,600 Square Foot Attended Quick Quack Car Wash and Related Site Improvements, Projects Located at 2059 Nevada City Highway. And Mr. Vance Shannon, behind me, is here representing Quick Quack Car Wash. Here's the site. It's at the junction of Nevada City Highway and Gates Place. Across the street, you'll find lumberjacks across the street from the Fowler Center, including Dutch Brothers. And immediately west of this project, the property, is the Dollar General Store. To the east is State Racks 20. You may recall in 2018, Plant and Commission approved about a 9,000-square-foot O'Reilly Auto Parts Center. They were actually, they went through plant check, were ready to pull building permits when they went through their application. The property has been sitting vacant since that time. In around 2020, the end of the year, the 10,000-square-foot office building caught fire. The City of Grass Valley issued demolition permit in '21, and the site is, the building has been demolished. It has remnants of foundations, and it has a monument sign still on the triangular property in front, and is fenced, and so it's been vacant for some time now. DRC recommended approval of Quick Quack Project in March 22, 2000, with conditions of approval, and I'll go over those conditions recommended by the DRC. Here's the site plan. The 3,600-square-foot building is located at northwest corner of the property, about 50 feet from Dollar General. The building is set back from eight feet from the property line, about 36 feet from Nevada City Highway, and about 144 feet from the rear property line in front of Highway 20. Along the southern property, you may recall, there's a 24-foot access easement that needs to be retained, and that's for the Dollar General access to Gates Place. The property in front, the triangular property, that's a city-owned property. It's a city right-of-way property. It has landscaping, and it has currently a monument sign. And we are recommending that this project enter into a landscape maintenance agreement to replant that and maintain the landscaping. So that would be a nice frontry improvement, or frontage improvement, rather, for this car wash facility. Access to the property is at the northeast corner of the property, the 40-foot driveway, and connects to the 26-foot Ingress-Egress Drive and 24-foot Ingress-Ingress Driveways or Drive Isles. The access on Nevada City Highway at the northwest corner of the property, that's not going to be utilized, and so that will be curbed off, and so we're eliminating that access as part of this application. Within the property, there are two ADA spaces, accessible spaces, and then in addition to that, there's 15 parking spaces that are also vacuum spaces, and so, and so those will be for the property to serve as parking. We also have bicycle racks just joining the entrance to the car wash. And in the rear of the property, where the hash lines are, those will be trellises over the vacu, the vacuum stations. We also have a trellis at the pay station. You'll see where the cars are accessing the car wash. There's also a trellis and allocation there, and I have a design of that. We also have a trash enclosure immediately adjoining what's known as the 238-square-foot QB station. That's basically the intended station. So we have a, right behind that, we have a trash enclosure that has CMU with similar materials to the building, landscaping on all non-accessible sides. We also have as part of the development, it's not necessarily a retaining wall, but a wall around the excess, around the egress, and it goes from about three feet to about five feet. Just, that goes around the egress there. So it's kind of a screening wall is really what it is. With respect to drainage, the property drains from north to south. You'll see that the hash area here at the lower end of the screen, that's going to be a bio-retention area to capture all the additional stormwater generated by the impervious services. So that meets City of Grass Valley standards. The DRC approved this subject to essentially four conditions. One is the landscape planner along Gates Place was about four feet, and they wanted to see more substantive landscape planner. The development code requires 10 feet in frontages. They were able to, it's a little constrained, they were able to get it to about nine feet six inches. So the landscape planner will almost make the 10 feet. The Plant and Commission and DRC can make recommendations based on site attributes or something smaller than 10 feet. Also, the DRC looked at the egress. At one point in time, the egress was more than 90 degrees, and it looked difficult for people to exit the facility. They did straighten that out a little bit, and it looks much nicer as far as making turn movements. Staff also had a condition on the Caltrans right-of-way property, fronting the highway. Right now, there's an existing chain-link fence. We had a condition, or have a condition, that would require them to upgrade that fence to like a black iron fence. But that Caltrans may not be agreeable to that, so we've simply added Caltrans approval to that. If they're not agreeable to that, we certainly won't see a black fence there. And then lastly, as shown in the architectural elevations, which have incorporated DRC recommendations, they had a number of comments on the architecture and the elevation. I'm going to show you tonight reflect that. Here's a landscaping plan. Landscaping plan consists of grasses, shrubs, perennials, and ornamental trees. Of the 8,700-square-foot, or excuse me, landscape here represents about 8,700 square feet, or about 23% of the site. The revised landscape plans replace New World Red Maple Trees with Prairie Fire Crab Apple Trees throughout. That was a comment that Liz Kutz had on the DRC.
Thank you.
She had some issue with the trees that were planted, the New World Red Maple Trees that were planted. So here's the landscape plan for the site. Through the elevations, and I won't go all the details of the elevations, but it's basically split-face concrete masonry, weight coating with a masonry sill, and that's in dark gray. We have along the frontage, and this is the frontage from the upper elevation, is what you're going to see from Nevada City Highway. We have combination metal perpendicular wall and shed roof canopies over the windows. We have horizontal lap siding in a light gray. We have a smooth coat stucco on the upper wall. We have obviously the pop-outs with the accent colors that reflect the corporate branding of Quick Quack. And we have goose down lighting for the signs and externally illuminated signage. This elevation is consistent with sign standards. These on the end of the lower elevation will have to be reduced to some degree, and so that sign will be smaller than what is represented there. Your right is the QB station. So that is what it's going to look like as far as a QB station. It matches the elevations of the car wash itself. Here's the south and east elevations. Yeah, the south elevation is from Nevada City. You see that from the highway. There is a large segment of bushes and trees, so it's not that visible. You also will not really see that elevation that much, because that's the elevation where the trellises for the vacuum station will go. And then, of course, here is your year used elevation. There's perspective views, and then example of both the pay station on the bottom and the vacuum station above. And this is looking from Nevada City Highway, the upper elevation, and then the rear is looking from as you're traveling down Highway 20. But again, you'll see, you'll have trellises going in between the building there. My general plan, the general plan is commercial. From a zoning perspective, the property is in the C2 zone. A use permit is required for vehicle services, which is defined as minor maintenance repair, which includes both attended and self-service car washes as vehicle services, as defined in the development code. From a sequel perspective, the project qualifies for infill category exemption, using the required criteria A through E, and I won't go over that. You've seen that before. Basically, it consists with a general plan, consists of a zoning designation, less than five acres. It's infill development, basically. And fine findings, or what, excuse me? Finding for the developer review, and you, basically, it's compatible with the neighborhood, and there's no health and safety issues relevant to this project. So with that, the developer review committee has recommended the plant commission approve the project as conditioned, or as modified by the plant commission, which includes determining the project category exempt, adopting the findings of fact, and approving the project in accordance with the conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Vance Shannon is here, if you'd like to provide an overview of the operations of Quick Quack.
Do you have a question for Lance, or?
Yeah. That is some sunshine yellow on that building, let me tell you. Bike racks. Is this for mountain bikers to go through the car wash?
Well, bike racks are a requirement of the Green Building Code, is really what it is. I mean, you have an employee that lives in the neighborhood, they're going to ride their bike to the facility.
Yeah.
Is really what it is.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll see a lot more of those with the Green Building Code, bike racks.
Anything, ladies, James?
I have a couple of questions, just on maybe more of the business side of the car wash and how it works. As far as the, how quickly a vehicle moves through the car wash, and the other competitors' car washes in town, I mean, there's times during summer where that winds up, and you get five or six, 10 cars that are kind of go out on the freeway, and here it shows just like two or three cars available before you get out onto Gates Place. How long are those vehicles there before they get into the car wash, and kind of like, what's that process of?
It's about three minutes through the car wash, so it's a conveyor. So as soon as they get into the car wash, and, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm Vance Shannon, I represent Quick Quack, and thank you for hearing us tonight. We, we, we have two lanes. One of them will be a license plate reader for members, which expedites the line substantially. So you're not waiting to pay if you're a member. You just go through the line, it sees your license plate, it opens the gate to let you in. If you're a paying member, then you'll go into, or a paying customer, excuse me, you'll go into the other line, and then there'll be that time taken to pay, but it's, it's usually, cars are going in for members, and then, you know, those that are paying come in, and it's three minutes through the wash. So they're not there more than five minutes, really, at kind of the top end. If you're a paying customer, maybe six at the most. And then there's no waiting at the end. Either they go to the vacuums, or they exit the car wash, and probably 60% of them vacuum.
It appeared that the vacuum, there was a lot of vacuum stations there, and so that was my concern, was it looks like you're anticipating a lot could be using that, and there's not a whole lot of room for cars to stack up kind of before they enter.
We like to keep enough vacuum capacity for everyone if we can, and there's also the need for parking spaces. So some of those are used for just parking, not necessarily for vacuum.
Okay. And then my other question was just on, if you could educate us on the kind of water usage and how that's used and recycled.
That's a great question. Yes, that's a great question. So typically, if we wash our cars in the driveway, we will use up to 150 gallons of water. All that water that comes off the car, all the detergents, all of the chemicals that you might use, go into the stormwater system. Our car wash uses about 23 to 25 gallons of wash. We have 4,500 gallons of reclamation tanks. We reclaim every bit of the water. We filter every bit of the water that comes in. Some of it is sent through an RO system, which is for the rinse at the end, so it's completely clean. That's where you get your 23 gallons, that and the detergents and so forth. And then all of that water goes into the sewer system, as opposed to the stormwater system. So it's a substantial savings on water. Professional car washes actually are highly recommended by the EPA, for one thing. And it's, you know, you sometimes think, gosh, a car wash uses a lot of water, and they may, but not when you're calculating the number of cars that you might be washing otherwise, you know, in people's driveways. It's substantial savings.
I've got two things. Thank you so much for changing the track.
Yes, ma'am. I took that list right to them.
I hope in the long run that you'll be grateful in it a long way.
It looks beautiful, I think, and that's, having that extra piece, I think, will really make the whole property and the whole project look really nice.
It'll look really pretty. A crab apple, that's just gorgeous.
Agreed.
I think you'll like it. I'm curious, if a member were to come in and just want to vacuum a car, can they do that?
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
So how would they enter? Would they?
They would probably come around the other side, or from potentially the backside, you know, on in. I'd have to look at the map again to get it straight.
There's a little left hook after the QB station. It doesn't go through the car wash, so that's.
Right, and that's kind of an exit lane, and they certainly could use that if they wanted to, and they could come around the backside to use the vacuums. And they can come in from this part over here, straight in, without having to go through the rest of the car wash.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's unusual that they do, but they can.
I just noticed I do that sometimes. I've eaten in my car.
There's probably more food underneath my seat. Sorry, but I understand. And you're very welcome for this, and thank you for the choices, because I think that was very helpful for us to get a good palette. It's conducive, and we've worked very hard on the design and elevations to meet and be congruent with the surrounding area and the style here. We have a very specific brand, as you might have mentioned, Commissioner, and it's playful, it's fun. We want to have fun with it. And part of it is, we don't call that a tunnel, we call that a showroom. And it's partially, for two years, I brought my daughter to Quick Quack before I ever worked for Quick Quack, because she loved it. And she was between six and maybe eight or so. And that's part of what it's for. It's for the fun of it, and the duck, and the children love it, so.
Where is the nearest one?
Probably Auburn, on Highway 49 down, just past Bell Road.
It seems to be popping up a hole over Roswell and Rockland as well right now.
We.
Is it a franchise model?
And I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, that's fine.
It's not a franchise. We own and operate all of our stores. We have 165. It's hard. We are moving very quickly. Not all of those are in California, but a good share of them are. We have some others in the western, sort of western part of the United States.
How many employees will you roughly have at this location, you think?
It's usually about 18 total employees. There's two to three on staff at any time.
Hours of operation?
Seven to nine, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
And you have somebody there the whole time?
Oh, yes, absolutely, at least two.
And how is it secured after nine o'clock?
It's, the vacuums are shut down, and it's open, but it's pretty much, for example, the vacuums are, there's not a vacuum at each station, it's a central vacuum system, so that's all enclosed, and the buildings are locked and so forth.
And doors shut to the.
Absolutely. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Do your colleague have any further presentation, or?
I just, you know, would like to thank you for your time and look forward to being a part of the community.
I live behind the Fowler Center and had to drive past the lighted abandoned building. It used to be there all the time, so I'm glad to see that land being put to some use.
We'll give you something much more beautiful and useful. Wash your car while you pass.
So anything further for staff? No, yes? Do we have any, thank you, any comments or questions from the public?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. I'm seeing no public comment in the room. Do we have a?
Motion.
A motion.
Regarding the item. That we determine the project to be categorically exempt as the appropriate level of environmental review in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. We adopt the findings of fact for approval of the Quick Quack Car Wash Project as presented in the staff report, and we approve the project in accordance with the conditions for approval as presented in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanty.
Yes, and I, just a comment, it's very nice to see that lighted area, as Eric mentioned, being put to good use. It's been just a terrible place for a long time, and there was, you know, big trouble there at times. So, so this is a big improvement for that area.
Thank you. Thank you. You're very welcome. We'll beautify it and keep it that way.
Commissioner Kutz. Yes, and welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vice Chairman Arbuthnot.
Yes.
Chairman Robbins.
Yes.
Four yeses.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I was going to ask if I need to stand in for the fifth. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to it. We'll get into building and get the thing on the road. Thank you. Nice. Appreciate it very much.
That being our lone public hearing item for the night, that takes us to other business. Assuming there's an open public comment again or anything. Other business, any review of city council items?
I don't have anything to add. Taylor giving that. Okay.
Nope. Okay. Which means any future meetings, hearings, or study sessions we need to know about?
We are in the development field a little bit slow with applications. DRC certainly has been slow. DRC certainly has been slow. Uh, we, we know things are going on in the community. Think application we put together, certainly there's a lot of construction going on. Uh, but we are relatively slow. So we're trying to put together, uh, a meeting in next month. But we'll have to see what shapes up following that, yes.
Okay. Okay, and, and at some point, Lance, you know, I, I mean, one of the hard burdens I have is that project on Dorsey Drive that's just been, you know, embattled, uh, in the courts and all of that stuff. And it's such, such a significant, um, place where we can house people who work in this community. And, you know, being in the real estate field, I totally get what's happening here with, um, with workforce housing and opportunity for people. And we just need the workforce. There is no option. And, um, maybe next month or the next time we meet, if we could get it like a, a synopsis over all the things we've approved and what hasn't even been started. I, I would just like to know, um, you know, because we've approved a, a fair amount of construction and I, I don't see a lot of it happening. It may be happening because of the plans and all of that stuff, but it would be good to get an idea of all of this work we've done for the last few years.
Yeah.
Where are we today?
Yeah, I, we will put together a project list and, and actually a project list is on the city's website. But we will put a, a project list and, and kind of give you.
Status.
You, where those projects are.
Yeah.
Excellent. Uh, exclusive to residential or project to the whole?
Just projects to a whole, really.
Okay.
I, I am keen on the residential piece of it, to tell you the truth.
I noticed the little coffee kiosk on Alta and Ridge hasn't, nothing's happened there, so.
No, a lot is just.
Oh, well. I think it's take time.
Okay, any brief reports by commissioners? Anything?
Just to really signal the, the thing that's going on Saturday, which is going to be an amazing event for the City of Grass Valley and, um, and honoring the armed forces, uh, of this country and the fact that we're having a big celebration finally post-COVID that people can get together and then we can gear up Thursday night markets. I really look forward to all of this activity and I think that, um, downtown will feel, start feeling the love that it really hasn't felt, um, for quite some time. And I'm really looking forward to that. And kudos to everybody who put together that thing on Saturday because it looks, it looks really awesome.
Looks great.
Okay. Then I guess with that, I can adjourn my very first meeting as Chair at 7:29-ish or whatever.
You are so good.
Well, we.